Welcome to the Franklin Historic Zoning Commission Meeting of November 14th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. And our first item tonight is to entertain a motion to approve the October 10th minutes. Did everybody access or read those minutes? If not, then let's have a motion to defer those to December.
I would move to defer to December.
Thank you, Mary. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Josh. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Amanda, announcements. We've got several.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate everyone working through Civic Clerk. We are happy to provide you additional training on that if that's something that you would like. I know that some people had some problems with access, and I think some of that, too, is because we've had some domain changes with our email addresses. But if you have any issues accessing the Civic Clerk information or even your email, I will be sending you an email shortly with information on how you can contact our ID Department directly to get your password information updated. If you've got a password that needs to be changed, or you've forgotten your password, that's a great way to do that. And you can do it remotely, you can do it from your phone. You don't have to come into City Hall to do that anymore, so hopefully that'll help with some of the convenience problems we've had. The Civic Clerk information I have to share right now is we will be providing everyone who's requesting one a surface pro, so you can access that information right in front of you at the meeting. And we'll show you, as we provide that information to you, a refresher on how to access that. So I hope everyone was able to get the information. In the case that you didn't, we did have those packets for you, so hopefully that was a good backup. So we have a few DRC items. I would like to bring forward some requests by the individual applicants, done by the city. So the first one I want to remind you of is that enough folks were comfortable with hosting a special DRC meeting Monday, a week from today, at 3:00 here in the boardroom for a project that I think you've heard about to a degree before. It's called Village at 228. It's located at the intersection of Franklin Road and Liberty Pike, near the Truett House, which is on the National Register of Historic Places. So that is something that is very preliminary, and the applicant would like to speak to you on as they seek to move forward through a development plan process. Is everyone still comfortable with coming in at 3:00?
Yes.
On Monday?
Yes.
Okay. If they submit by today, then we will hold that meeting. If I don't receive that information by the deadline, then I'll let you know, and we'll just hold the meeting at 4:00. And as I just got into, we will have the regular meeting at 4:00. Right now, we have a good eight or so items on that agenda. I will do my best to get you that information through a Civic Clerk link sometime tomorrow, so you'll be able to access that information. Speaking up, we did hear you loud and clear. We do plan on having the meetings here for the Design Review Committee back on the floor. So we'll put the tables back on the floor, and you'll all have your own mics, and you'll be able to sit at the table on the floor. We still will be accessing everything through the projectors, though, so there won't be hard copies, because we haven't had hard copies for DRC in a while. But based on your questions and comments about trying to make it feel a little bit more informal and inviting, that's something that we plan to do. So I hope that is something we can look forward to next week. So there has been a request of one of the recent DRC meeting folks to hold a special site visit to look at a demolition request at 724 Fair Street. That is an accessory structure that was requested, or has not been formally requested, but was discussed at a DRC meeting, I believe it's last month, for demolition. The attendees of that meeting had requested that the applicant host a site visit. So in working through that, I am wondering if everyone is comfortable with Thursday, December 1st at 3:30.
Can we get back?
You absolutely can. I do need to get a notice in the paper by Monday, so I'm hoping I can hear back from you all sometime, as soon as you can, so that I can let the applicant know if I have a majority of folks who can attend. I certainly wouldn't want to hold it.
Can folks, those that are here, Lisa needs to get back with you, but can others just say yes or no on December 1st?
At 3:30?
At 3:30?
3:30.
Yeah, 3:30.
I tried to have it early enough so there's still daylight, but not... If we started at 4:00, it might be dark by then.
Yes, it will be. December 1st, 3:30, is that good for me?
Works for me.
At 724 Fair Street?
Yes.
I don't know.
That's all right. If you can just get back with her, that's fine. But if we can get at least five...
724 Fair.
Yes.
724 Fair. So we'd add the sign.
Yes. There should be sufficient on-street parking through there, but it's something that I would only want to hold if we had at least four of you there. I think that will want to make it worth the...
I'm sensing you've got that.
Okay.
And then the others can just get back with you.
Okay, that sounds great. Well, I'll go ahead and pencil that in. Thank you all for that, and I'll send you an email to confirm that. And then we are hopeful that if you are able, that we can hold a special DRC meeting on December the 19th at 3:00. That would be just an hour before your regular DRC meeting in December, so we can talk about the schematic design for the new City Hall building that is being proposed.
And that would be on the 19th?
Yes, it would be Monday, December 19th at 3:00, and then we'd have our regular DRC at 4:00.
Yeah, okay.
So if that's something that cannot work for you, definitely let me know. But we're hopeful that having some additional time would be helpful for you all, as well as the applicant. Any questions for me?
Nope.
Well, I appreciate, I know Ms. Danifelter appreciates your time, too, with a few extra meetings, but we're hopeful it'll be something that's beneficial to everyone. Thanks.
Okay, we're ready now to vote on, to place any non-agenda items on the agenda. And this process by design is reserved for any emergency instances. These items shall be considered only upon the unanimous approval of all Historic Zone members. So are there any requests for non-agenda emergency items? Hearing none, we'll move on. Are there any citizen comments for items not on the agenda? Hearing none of those, we'll move on. All right, our first item tonight is consideration of alterations siding and roofing at 1368 Eastern Flank Circle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The applicant is requesting approval retroactively for some work that has been, has taken place on the building on the screen, which is the Eastern Flank Battlefield Park Clubhouse, located at 1368 Eastern Flank Circle. The applicant did appear before the DRC to discuss the proposal at its September meeting. So the request is specific to approval of the siding and roofing work that has taken place at this building, and then there's also a restroom building immediately to its left. Let's see, right here. Due to some timing issues between when the work was approved by the Board of Mayor and Aldermen and when the city adopted all the remaining City of Franklin historic-related parks into the historic preservation overlay, there was some miscommunication. And so the work has taken place, but it was intended to go through the proper channels, and unfortunately, that was something that we were able, only able to bring to you after the fact. So it seemed that from the DRC meeting, everyone was very comfortable. It is very limited to the roofing material being replaced in kind, which does not require a COA, and then the siding material being replaced. The siding has, before this, was a faux stucco, almost Ephesus material, and it has been replaced with a lap cementitious siding of the blue color you see on the screen. The guidelines that apply to the proposal are the guidelines that are specific to Chapter 3, commercial buildings, specifically non-historic commercial buildings. And because the buildings do not contribute to a period of significance, they are very modern in construction. The alterations proposed are found to be more in keeping with the character of the historic districts in general, and the guidelines do support those. So it is recommended that you take that into consideration. Because the applicant is the City of Franklin, a city-sponsored project, there is no official staff recommendation, but I am happy to answer any questions you may have. And we also have Mr. Walker here from the Parks Department, who can add anything or answer any questions you have as well. Thank you.
Good, thanks. Brian, do you want to make any additional comments? Okay. Oh gee. Okay, are there any citizens which comment on this application? Hearing none, need a motion then for the, from the commission?
Are we looking for, it's still a certificate of appropriateness?
Yes.
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Discussion.
Well, I'd just say that I appreciate the city doesn't really have to come to the Historic Zoning Commission, but they do. The Parks Department has been amazing, so...
Thank you. The city, or the county, or the state don't have to come, but they do.
That's right, but they do.
And we're appreciative of that.
Yes.
And I know part of what you have done on the front of that building, or all around the building, what you did to that stucco that was there, our church is going through exactly the same thing right now, and it's an expensive process to replace that stuff. So anyway, from the looks of things, it looks like mission accomplished. All right, any other discussion? All in favor then of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brian, thank you. Okay, I think all of you saw the item for 212, 214 Main was withdrawn. So our next item is 402 Bridge Street, consideration of wall construction for screening. Staff.
Ms. Emily Huffer will be presenting this item this evening.
Ah, good for Emily.
This site was located on a corner lot, fronting Bridge Street and 4th Avenue, and was constructed circa 1830s and features federal detailing. It is considered a contributing building to the downtown Franklin Historic District. The applicant is proposing to construct a wall on the left rear side of the house to conceal the HVAC units and trash receptacles. The new wall is proposed to tie into the existing courtyard wall at the left side of the property and to be constructed using a similar style of brick as the existing courtyard wall and pillars. The wall will include a minimum four-foot-tall wooden access gate with the final height of the proposed wall to be determined by the height of the trash cans. The guidelines recommend that fences and walls be compatible with the architectural style of the building and that they support the historic character of the district. Fences and walls in the rear yard should not exceed seven feet in height, and gates are recommended to consist of different materials than the associated fences or walls. Gates are also recommended to swing as opposed to slide. The guidelines recommend that mechanical equipment be concealed behind buildings or to be screened from street view with landscaping, fencing, or walls. As such, the proposed wall request appears to be consistent with the guidelines. Staff recommends the Historic Zoning Commission approve the application with conditions.
Thank you.
Would you like to read those conditions?
The conditions are that the brick must be consistent with the existing brick wall and pillars on the property. A sample of the brick must be submitted to the preservation planner for review and approval prior to work commencing. The wall height cannot exceed seven feet in accordance with the zoning ordinance. The application must meet all of the requirements of the City of Franklin prior to work commencing. Any additional changes to the approved plans must be returned to the preservation planner or the Historic Zoning Commission for review and approval.
Okay, thanks. Amanda, come on up. I tried to tell you?
Hi, I'm Amanda McCrery. I'm an architect with Chisel Workshop, and we've been working on this project for a while. You've seen me here before. So we have two HVAC systems in the back. We would like to add a screening wall. This is on the alley side of the property. This is on their property, though. It's not in the right-of-way of the alley. And we would like to add a wall tying into the pillar that's to the left of the existing gate that takes them to their courtyard and ties into the corner of the house you can see on that truck bed picture to the right of the plan. The wall will not be as tall as the existing wall. We made it, it's on the drawings how high it is, but basically, it's a couple of courses taller than the City of Franklin trash cans, because the objection, the objective here is to hide the HVAC system as well as two trash enclosures. So that's where the height came from. We have two wood gates, too, to allow it to open a little wide, so we can get those trash cans in and out on trash day. And I'm just trying to make the alley have a little bit nice of an appearance in the back.
Okay. Are there any citizens which comment on the application? Hearing or seeing none, commissioners need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve certificate of appropriateness for item number four at 402 Bridge Street.
Thank you, your second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Kathy. Discussion.
On this exhibit, the one that's being shown right now, the, you were saying that the dashed line indicates what exactly?
That's the existing wall that's already there on site. It's much taller than the proposed wall, and it has two pillars on either side of the gate. It has three stacked cap, brick cap, on those existing piers. We did, on the new wall, take it down to one cap, just because as we scaled the wall down, we wanted to scale the cap down.
Lisa, turn around in this picture.
You can see it in the front picture, yes. We're not changing any of that besides just the repair work you can see on that top left.
Thank you.
So the only section that's new is the section I have my cursor on, right here, and then right here. So it's two sections of wall, and it ties into the existing courtyard wall that you see dashed here.
And if I'm not confused, it's going to have very low visibility.
It will, yes, because it's, it's in the alley side, but it's on the back right alley side, so as you're going down fourth, the garage sticks out further. And so this, it's actually, you can see the jog of the garage even sticks out further than the corner of what's our bathroom.
Any other question, comments?
How old is the original, is the wall that's existing?
We don't know for sure, but again, when that addition was put on in the 80s, we assume that wall was put in during that time period. It looks like a similar brick and style of what we would have seen in 1981, when that addition was put on.
I can say that I'm pretty sure I remember that.
It's, yes.
Any other comments? Ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, our next item is, flip the page, consideration of fencing at 906 Fair Street. Cliff Jones, applicant. Amanda?
Thank you very much. The applicant is requesting a certificate of appropriateness for the placement of front yard fencing at 906 Fair Street. We do have with us the homeowner today, in lieu of the applicant, who is here to represent the item. The application materials do include a number of things outside of the scope of work we're discussing today. All the rear yard fencing has been approved administratively for issuance of a COA. I believe portions of it are still pending approval for floodplain considerations, but generally speaking, the parts of the application that are not being considered are alterations to the front porch steps, alterations to the front entrance walkway, and the extension of the driveway. I do believe that a majority of those can be considered for administrative review. It's just pending some additional information. But the rear yard fence has already been addressed. So the application that you are considering today is specific only to the front yard The front yard fencing is proposed to run the length of the front yard as viewed from Fair Street, and you see on the screen here. It will tie back to the principal building on the property on its right side, come across the front yard, and then stop at the location of the driveway. The fencing's proposed to consist of a scalloped wood picket, and I'll go ahead and scroll down so you can see that. It's proposed to be similar to what you see in this exhibit here. And it's proposed to measure three feet in height. The application indicates that the fence will consist of wood or vinyl. I believe the intent is wood, but I did address it as wood or vinyl as far as the, you know, reviewing it against the guidelines. No gate has been indicated for placement along the front walkway, so I would ask that the applicant provide information to indicate if that's the intent. The guidelines recommend that front yard fencing be located along the front yard property line, that wooden picket fences are the most common fencing material in the historic districts, that guidelines recommend that one design fences and walls to be compatible with the architectural style of the building. I do have a street view available of that building that you can see. It does feel a little skewed. It's not that narrow. I don't know why it's projecting this way, and my apologies, but, but this is the front yard extent, and this is the style of the home that you see on the screen. Based on the chosen material, one should use proportions, heights, elements, and levels of opacity that are similar to those seen in the district. The fencing style is generally consistent with that of the architectural style of the building and with the overall character of the Hinchville Historic District. So it is recommended that the commission approve item five with the following conditions. The conditions being that if a gate is proposed for placement at the location of this front walkway, that it be configured to swing inwardly per guidelines, and that the design of the gate be submitted to staff for review and approval in light of any applicable guidelines prior to the work commencing, that all conditions of approval previously issued for that rear yard fencing remain intact, and that any additional changes be submitted for review and approval by other staff or the commission. Thank you.
Is, is the applicant here?
Mr. Hathaway is here, and I'm sure he'd be happy to come up and speak.
Scary.
Hello, Mike Hathaway, homeowner.
Ah!
Not, not designer.
Are there any citizens which comment on this application? Otherwise, we need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'm moved to approve with conditions the certificate of appropriateness for item number five.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa. Questions?
I've got a question. I did not know that we were in our guidelines, I guess I didn't read it right, allowing vinyl siding on front yard fences.
That's a, that's a great note. The, I should have been more clear, the intent, the condition of approval needs to be amended to include that it is intended to be a wood fence.
We don't want vinyl.
But we, yeah, the larger question is, I just didn't even know.
They are not, vinyl is not permitted, or not recommended by the guidelines for the front yard. I didn't speak very clearly. What I meant to say is that the application says wood or vinyl, so I wanted it to be clear that the applicant, Mr. Jones, had told me he intended wood, but it probably should be a condition of approval.
Yeah, well, I would make that a condition, an amendment, that it be wood.
I'd second that motion to amend.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor of that amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Back to the main motion now. Are there other questions on the main motion as amended?
Mr. Chair, can I just clarify? We're not putting a gate in the front. Just, I didn't say that earlier.
One que, I see the fence going across the front, I see the fence going down, I'm going to say, the right side as you're looking at the house. What about the left side?
Well, we, we didn't want to separate us from the neighbor on that side, so...
It is a shared drive.
Neighborly.
It's a shared, it's a shared driveway.
Yeah, it's a shared drive.
Shared drive, I got you, okay.
Yeah, I would say, Mr. Chair, I would, I guess it's a question for the applicant, but you usually do see a front gate. It's very traditional, where there's sidewalk, so I would like for it to, even if you don't do a gate, for it to read like a gate.
Can you explain what your intent would be?
Well, you would put two posts on either side of the sidewalk as if it were just to a fixed gate, because I think that that sort of orient your eye to the side of the house, and traditionally, in an old neighborhood, you, you look like you're walking up the front walk. So I think he can achieve what he wants with just...
Two posts?
Yeah.
I think you're, you're saying that, I think the intention is there is just a gap in the fence.
Oh, a gap. I'm fine with the gap.
There's, there's a hole there.
There's a hole.
Excuse me, I thought you were just going straight across.
No, 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 no. We want, we want an opening there.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? So we're, we're ready to vote then on the main motion as amended. All in favor of that main motion as amended for the fence to be wood, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our last item is consideration of new construction accessory structure at 316 Bridge Street. Eric Smith, applicant. Amanda?
The applicant is requesting a certificate of appropriateness for the construction of an accessory structure at 316 Bridge Street. The applicant did appear before the DRC to discuss the proposal during a September meeting. The proposal includes the construction of a one-story accessory. Scroll down so you can see that. Here's the site plan. It is proposed to be located approximately 50 feet behind the rear plane of the principal building and oriented toward Bridge Street. It is designed at a one-story scale, which is a scale that is subordinate to the one-and-a-half story scale of the principal building. Its size and height are subordinate to the principal building, as it measures approximately four feet shorter than the main ridge, and the footprint of the accessory, including its covered entrance, measures approximately 878 square feet, which is approximately 34% of the footprint of the house. Details complement but are less elaborate than the character of the historic building. The roof form relates to the pitch and shape of the principal building, and that staff and the DRC's recommendation, in September, the original design has been modified to remove the full width front porch, and instead, the proposal includes a bracketed covered entrance, which I'll project on the screen here. The proposed materials include cementitious lap siding of a reveal to match the addition to the principal building, which is four feet, I'm sorry, four and a half inches in reveal, an asphalt shingle roof, and a parched coated CMU block foundation, and aluminum-clad windows. The exact window specifications have yet to be provided to staff. The proposed cumulative lot coverage on the property is at 17.5%, which is consistent with the guidelines, which recommend no more than 100. with the guidelines, which recommend no more than 35%. So I wanted to provide additional information on the history of the structures on the site. From the review of the proposal, it appears that there was an accessory building on-site previously, a historic outbuilding, as of the date of the most recent Google Street View. That is dated January 2021, so about a year and a half issue ago. I'm gonna pull that, a photo on the screen here so you can see that. Should be coming up on the screen. Okay. So this is a file, a photo from the staff files from our historic resources inventory. We do try to get a photograph from Street View of every structure within the historic district, and this is the photo we have on file for that. An image of the outbuilding indicates that it was there in January 2021. As of the September 19th DRC meeting at which this proposal was discussed, the outbuilding is no longer present on the site in the previous location. This view that you see on the screen is from Bridge Street, and zoomed in probably a little bit, but it was on the left side of the principal building as facing Bridge Street. Additional information is needed from the applicant and the property owner in order to understand the circumstances of the demolition or removal of the structure from the property so that staff can prepare the necessary analysis for the entire proposal that you see. There's simply no information on file that indicates that it was demolished or removed with permission from the Historic Zoning Commission or from the City of Franklin. And so additional information would be invited. I did speak to the applicant about that, and I'm hoping that the applicant can have some information to share with you on that today. So it is recommended that the item be deferred, and it's because additional information is needed from the applicant in order to review the entirety of the proposal in light of the applicable zoning ordinance requirements and the historic district design guidelines. Further, the right elevation of the proposed new accessory structure is missing from the plan set. So it would be recommended that if the commission did choose to approve the new construction of the accessory structure this evening, that the applicant provide the full scaled set to the preservation staff prior to a building permit being issued so that it can be reviewed in entirety in light of all the guidelines that would apply. Also, if issued a COA by the commission this evening, the accessory structure windows must have a historic profile and dimension, with those specifications being reviewed and approved by staff as well. If issued a COA, the application must meet all the requirements of the City of Franklin's Building and Neighborhood Services Department, and with any additional changes, coming back to staff for review and approval. I'm happy to answer any questions, but we do have the applicant here who can answer any of your questions as well.
Okay. Would the applicant please come forward then? If you would introduce yourself and then make any comments on this application.
Hi, I'm Eric Smith. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to present this evening. Do you want me to just address the accessory structure, what I've gleaned from the homeowner, or do you want anything else?
Do that, and then any other comments you want to make in the application as it is currently presented, and then we'll ask you for things as our discussion.
Okay. So I just asked Susan Comer, which is the property owner, to give me a little bit more information that she had about the shed, and she just, she didn't have a lot of information. She told me that she purchased the property in 89. The shed was there. The shed was approximately eight foot by 12 foot, wood-framed walls on the ground. She said there was no, there was no foundation, and she did some repairs over the 33 years, but she just felt like it was not something that was salvageable. And then I'll just kind of read the last blurb that she sent me in the email, and she said, "Eric had brought to my attention that historic does not allow structures to be removed, even due to the condition that they are. I did not realize. I should have contacted the historic department prior to removal of the shed. My desire is to build a structure that would increase the historic charm of my home in Franklin." And that's pretty much all I have on the information on the shed to bring any light to that.
Okay. Why don't you talk about what you want to do? Okay, any other comments that maybe?
I mean, the only thing that, on page four of the, of the, this little, whatever this is, I just put that we're gonna have Pella, I think that might be in there now, but Pella Lifestyle Series Aluminum Clad Double Hung Windows. And so that's the only thing that I, you know, that is a window that is approved by you guys, and that's what we would, are planning on using on the structure. Also, on the last page of the, like, the plan set, I did take a picture of the existing neighboring accessory structure. It sits on property right next door, and that's what the, what the accessory structure would be sitting next to in New Orleans.
Okay. Seeing no citizens left to comment, I will entertain a motion then from the commission. And then we can have some discussion.
Well, if we move to defer, we don't discuss.
All right, we can't discuss.
Right, isn't that right?
Huh? If we move to defer, but I think he would need to know some thoughts from people.
Okay.
But we, is that? I'm not sure.
I defer to Ms. Hendricks, but it's my understanding that Ms. Besser is correct. If there is a motion to defer, there's no more discussion, but you're more than welcome to ask questions of the applicant or staff.
Well, that's what, okay, all right, all right, all right. Well, let's get, if that's the motion then, let's settle on that. Who made it? Susan made it, okay.
Okay, I'll make it.
Tyler seconded, and then let's.
I don't think she's made it yet.
Hasn't made it yet.
She hasn't made the motion yet.
Yeah, you did, I heard. You deferred it to the December meeting.
Yes, that's what I've done. Thank you.
The historic zoning meeting, okay, December. All right, other comments that we can make for when he comes back?
Well, Mr. Chair, could we have a thought on, we're deferring it?
To December.
To.
Now, if he wants to come to the design review next Monday, he can do that, and we can have a further discussion as to what we, what we see.
Well, the staff had asked it to be deferred.
Correct.
Because she didn't have enough.
Enough information.
And I would ask, is the information provided tonight enough? That the applicant?
From my standpoint, no.
No, okay.
I don't think so for me either.
And, but I'm seeing if we can give him a little bit of guidance as to what we think we need to see. That's my.
I'd appreciate that.
That's my whole point, yeah, so we can defer. Let's, so let's do that.
Can I ask a question of staff?
Yeah, yeah.
So, Ms. Rose, what is it that you feel like you need to see from a staff perspective on the demolition, what appears to be a demolition of a structure without any application having been made?
Thank you. I prepared the report before I was able to get additional information from Mr. Smith on his client's actions. I believe that it would be proper for the commission to receive an application requesting demolition. If the commission seeks to approve demolition retroactively, that's certainly within the commission's purview, but there was not enough information for staff to feel that it could support approval of the new structure in light of the applicable zoning ordinance requirements specifically related to how many structures can be on a site and, you know, how large they can be in relation to the location. The other request is that demolition requests are intended to meet criteria outlined in the guidelines. The guidelines would recommend that demolition only be approved if the building had no architectural or historical integrity, which typically means it's not at least 50 years of age, that the building has structural instability that is documented by a structural engineer or architect that's provided to the commission to consider. Typically, that includes cost estimates for repair versus removing and building back something comparable, as the guidelines outline. Further, the applicant could provide information about, you know, economic hardship as outlined in the guidelines, if that applied, or if public safety and welfare, as determined by the City of Franklin, required its removal, which is not the case for this particular item. So it would be proper for the commission to receive an application from the applicant or the applicant's client to make such a request with that documentation so the commission can consider it. Now, I do know, based on the information that was provided today, it's already been removed, so it would be within the commission's purview to determine how to remedy the situation if you find that needs to be remedied, whether it's to construct something back comparable in its previous location, or to discuss further mitigation. It's hard to mitigate the demolition of a historic structure. If it's gone, it's gone. But we do ask that all our applicants within the historic district seek approval for demolition through the proper channels.
And just to, just to kind of further on that, from the standpoint of what's required with a demolition permit application that is outlined in the guidelines.
Yes. And the City of Franklin generally does not require a demolition permit if there is no foundation. If we have photographs from the applicant indicating that there was no foundation on the building, that I don't believe a demolition permit would be required, but it does require a certificate of appropriateness. Is that correct, Randy? Whether or not a foundation is present, okay, I misunderstood. So a demolition permit would also be required in addition to a certificate of appropriateness.
All right, so they need to submit two applications then, one for the demolition and then one for the new structure. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. And based on the commission's determination of whether or not demolition can be supported or how it chooses to mitigate, if it so chooses to mitigate, then we can determine if an additional structure can be built on the site.
Okay. Is it showing up on the Sanborn map, Amanda?
It, in my research, if it's correct, it appears to be original to the, like, contemporary to the construction of the bungalow, which is a 1940s bungalow. It's listed as a contributing accessory structure within the National Register documentation. It's also listed as being more than likely contemporary to the construction of the house in that documentation as well.
So the information that we need to provide Eric so that he can provide the homeowner is to say, we need an application from you for the demolition of that accessory structure that was already taken down, and to end that, give the history and why it was removed, and any photographs, and any history you've got on it, that we can have a little more information.
Yeah, that's some of the information I did request from the homeowner.
Okay.
I mean, I, from what I can understand, it doesn't seem like we're gonna have enough information to.
But just give us whatever can be developed.
I mean, I, I mean, are we probably going down the road where we need to just have her rebuild that structure?
I don't know.
Because that's fine.
I don't know.
Okay, because I, you know, I'm, I was brought into this after all this has happened, and so I'm just trying to, I'm trying to piece this together for her and all that, so I just feel like I got a little something.
The more information you can provide of that structure, the better we can make a decision going forward.
Well, and this, just from a, from a applicant perspective, I guess I would say this is very recent, because we've got the photographs not that long ago, so presumably the applicant or the owner hired somebody to do that and would have documentation of what was done, when it was done, and that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I.
Be helpful.
I believe, from what I understand, that she's, she removed the structure in the past six months, so.
Yeah.
So that's, that's from what I can understand.
Right. So surely the owner would have documentation of paying for that and when that was, when that occurred, and who she paid, and those types of things that would help in documenting the removal.
Okay, so we, so we want to know who, like, how it, like, who.
Whatever information you can provide to give a history of the accessory structure and when it was demolished, and any details related to that. I think that's what Mr. Denton is saying.
Okay, yeah, that's.
And I'll just, I'll just add that we really treasure our accessory buildings, and so we don't want to lose them, and we work really hard to try to keep those. So this is why we're asking for all of them.
I, I understand that, and I mean, I guess what I was thinking is, I could propose to her that putting the structure back up is an option for moving forward, if that's what you guys are recommending, but maybe I need to go to the.
Yeah, I'll let you work that out with her.
I would also say that there are outbuildings like this that property owners have put a foundation under, and we have worked to approve those, especially if they were considered contributing.
Okay.
In my mind, it'll be hard to consider, just like Amanda said.
This other accessory building till we kind of have this resolved. So, I mean, I can give lots of comment on the other building, but I don't know that it's time.
I can too, but it doesn't, I guess it's moot at this point.
Yeah. So I think that needs to be resolved first, so the applications come in, let us review it. It might, we don't know if we're gonna make you rebuild something, or what the repercussions can be. I don't know what all is allowed. It's very unfortunate, and that's saying it nicely. Hate that that happened.
Well, and part of the reason I was asking my question to Ms. Rose about what's required for the demolition permit is just because it's gone doesn't remove the, as I understand it, remove the obligation to have gotten a demolition permit, and so, and there are certain things that have to be submitted for us to consider that. And so I just think, I guess where I'm going is, I think people have to be very careful about demolition, and, yeah.
For sure. I, from what I can understand, getting a historic demolition permit, from what you guys have discussed, I've never tried to do that. I've never been approached to do that, but from what I can understand in a previous meeting I was in, the facts that I'm gonna need to get, to present to you guys for an actual demolition permit, there's no way to get that. I can't get an engineer to decide how good the structure was, or.
Yeah, it's gone.
We don't have, we can't present hardship because she's building a new structure, so she doesn't have a financial hardship. You know, and so, so, I mean, I don't think that there's any possibility for me to be able to bring enough facts to you guys to request a demolition permit. I think, to me, it's like a moot point in trying to get that, and so I'm trying to figure out, you know, what the, what the next steps would be, and so that's, I mean, is that reasonable, or am I?
If I may, I think I can help with that. I think that it would be appropriate to just provide as much information as you can to help inform the commission, so it can determine whether or not it would have supported demolition of the structure had it been brought forward at the time before it was demolished. If the commission decides that demolition would not have been supported, it would be up to the commission to decide how it would like to mitigate the action, whether it would be to build something comparable back in place. That's why additional information's kind of needed anyway, just so we can get a better sense of the size of the structure and the materials. It would not be a historic structure, obviously, because reconstruction's not historic, but it may be the commission's determination that, you know, having those, the presence of those smaller outbuildings within the district helps define the character of the district. So I can't. So I can't, I can't surmise that the commission will decide, but I think it just needs more information to be able to make that decision, and for staff to be able to provide guidance to the commission.
Eric, did you say that the owner had been there since 1989?
Eighty-nine, yes, sir, that's when she bought the property.
So perhaps there are some other photographs, other than what I see up on the screen, that would tell a little more of the story.
For sure, and I, I've, I requested that, I, you know, I had a conversation with Ms. Comer, and I asked her to provide any, any documentation of the entire history of the, of the shed, and I, I got a, basically I got a history of what she stored inside the shed, and so, and some information about some termites and other critters that had lived under there. And so I, I, she, she searched and could not find any photos that she could of the shed, and, and so I, I guess the only information I think I'm gonna be able to come back with is a date of when she had the shed removed. And so I, you know, I, I guess that's the only thing I can think I would possibly be bringing back to you guys, and it, and I, I believe it's somewhere around, from what I can understand, somewhere around six months ago. And so, you know, I mean, it had to be right before I bet was brought on the work of designing and, and into this, and so it was somewhere six, nine months, or something like that. And so, so that's, that's just kind of where I'm at. I don't think that whether it was six or nine months ago, it's gonna change anything we have to talk about.
All you can do is present whatever story you can assemble.
Okay.
Including whatever photographs you've got since 1989 of that property that shows that shed, and whatever else that you can provide, and then we'll deal with that.
Okay.
And an application.
And an application, yeah. So you'd be in an application.
So, so I'm gonna bring an application to.
Submit an application to Ms. Rose.
If he believes he has the basis to submit it.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, we can't, I mean, that's, that's up to the applicant to decide what to file.
Yeah, they need to decide, you need to decide whether or not it's worth doing that.
We've probably drugged this into the ground. I appreciate your time.
No, no, that's, that's fine, but, I mean, you've submitted it, so we need to try to give you some kind of idea.
I appreciate it.
Yeah.
So right now, we've deferred this whole thing until December.
Well, you have a motion on the.
We got, we got a vote on it, okay.
Before we do that, I just have, you mentioned the dimensions of the building that she gave you, what were those dimensions?
Approximately eight by 12.
Eight by 12.
Yeah. Which gets it a little bit over 100 square feet.
And maybe, maybe when whoever demolished it, they might have some information about, we demolished this building, eight-by-12 building, and the foundation, and whatever, disposed of the site, you know, you might get a hint as to what the structure was more about.
Okay.
And then, you know, where is it located on the site, or where was it located, on the site plan in relationship to the house and the new structure?
Yeah, I think I could probably put the, I think I could put it in the site plan from the photo, from the Street View photo, approximately.
Well, and that's why I.
Going where the driveway is.
That was a good point, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was asking for, who did it, because it's very likely that there was a contract to do that.
Okay.
Even if it's not formal emails or text messages or whatever, that might help.
Okay, let's have a vote then on the deferral. All in favor of the deferral to the December meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Eric, thank you.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you.
Did we have a second?
We did.
Anything else?
Move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, please.
I did.
Tyler did.
Seconded.
Josh seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, see everybody next Monday.